Faith, I guess it is. You shall be hearing, I assume, from the city and Andy Murray from Williams &amp; Works. Somehow all of the information will go back and forth and we'll get it on the agenda for the fall. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the site plan review for 413 East Main Street, the Dollar General building. Andy, you want to walk us through that?
Yes, can you just one second?
Yeah.
So this, this is an expansion of an existing building that's just down the street from City Hall here. This is, I'll go back to my computer, the Dollar General. At 413 East Main, so we're literally talking like a block down the street. It's generally at the corner of Washington and Main at the northeast corner. It occupies just under an acre. And this is only a mixed use. So several years ago, we created this mixed-use zoning district to accommodate a little bit wider variety of land uses and a fairly downtown-style development pattern. So what Dollar General is proposing to do here is to expand their buildings slightly towards the east and then also to reconfigure the parking lot and the driveway on Main Street. Dollar General is a retailer, as we all know, and retail stores are permitted by right in the mixed-use district. And again, so the, you know, the use is something that's approved, the building has been approved and has been there. So this is primarily focused on the, on the expanded area. We did get a complete site plan package from Dollar General here. There are only a handful of items missing from the site plan, location of existing structures, driveways, areas within 100 feet of the property's boundary, existing and proposed unloading areas, zoning of abutting subject, zoning of abutting properties, utilities, and drainage. And most of the drainage actually is shown. As I, when I first wrote this, I did not notice they have a little bit of a drainage area shown on kind of the northwest corner of the, of the plan, so we'll talk about that in a quick minute. This is a, this property is zoned mixed-use, and so the mixed-use district is written such that you don't have much in the way of required setbacks here. If anything, we have, instead of a minimum setback, we have more of a maximum setback. So this is on Main Street, right near downtown, so the ordinance requires that the building is detailed, you know, to that front lot line as much as possible. The ordinance intends to kind of continue the pattern of Main Street here, having buildings fronting the street, built up to the street as much as possible, so we're creating, you know, a comfortable, walkable place for shoppers. The final size of the building after the expansion would be 11,560 square feet. We have no concerns on the setbacks. Like I said, we require the 80% of the building frontage be in the primary front yard, so they're basically just planning on extending that, the building along that horizontal boundary, so it's just going to continue to line Main Street. The site presently contains 86 parking spaces, and the new lot is proposed to contain 42, so they're reducing the amount of parking on the site by quite a bit. They're, so, you know, it's, it's interesting here in that typically we don't see somebody voluntarily reducing the amount of parking they have on their site. That's, that's a little unusual, but in this case, I'm glad to see it for a bunch of reasons. You know, in terms of what the ordinance requires, they're, they're overparked. Based on the estimation of what is shown on the site plan, this use would require 58 spaces. And like I said, they're, they're proposing 42, so they were way overparked before. Now they're a bit underparked, but as with all uses, there's a mixed-use or C2, they can count off-street or on-street public parking within 400 feet of their property towards that, towards that requirement. And they've also shown a bike rack near the entrance on Main Street, and the zoning ordinance allows them to count for that, to count towards five spaces. So when you factor in all of those things, they would still easily meet the minimum parking requirement. Once you count the bike rack, they're about 11 short, and if you just look at what's on the street within a block, you're easily at more than 11 spaces. So between off-street parking on the property, also including on-street parking, off-street public parking, and the offset they get for the bike rack, they easily have, you know, plenty of parking still for this use. As far as site lighting is concerned, the applicant submitted a photometric plan. It is almost uniformly compliant with the zoning ordinance, except there is one little spot on the northwestern property boundaries where they are at 0.7-foot candles, and the ordinance has a maximum of 0.5. So that's a very minimal oversight. You can probably be corrected by, you know, adjusting the direction of a lamp by a small amount or something like that. So I think that is a fairly minimal, you know, change in the ordinance here, or I'm sorry, change to, to the site plan that the applicant should make. Signage is shown on the site plan as well. They're basically just going to relocate the existing sign and replace it if it meets the sign ordinance either way, so we don't have any concerns with that. As far as landscaping is concerned, there are some landscaping requirements for parking lot landscaping and where parking lots provide people to look street. So they propose one street tree along East Main Street or four street trees along Avery, which meet the requirements of the ordinance. And then we also have a requirement in zoning for interior parking lot landscaping, and so...
Andy, if I can interrupt you here for a minute. I don't believe that those fences, there's three or four different types, sizes and things of that nature, I don't believe that they're on their property. In other words, I think it belongs to the individual residences. It's 99% sure that they're in the east, okay? At least the, the, the structure side is facing the residence, the nice side is facing the parking lot.
Okay.
Which would indicate, correct?
Correct.
Wrong, you don't, but I...
That's, the way they're supposed to be built is that the, the good side's got a phase out, or the finished side.
What I'm saying is the good side faces to Dollar General parking lot, which means that they're coming from a residential.
Correct. That would...
So it'd be a residential fence.
Mm-hmm.
And there are different ones, right? And I'm, I'm fine with that, and I'm, my, my thinking here is, is there's no sense penalizing them, but we may put in their condition that they be responsible for helping the neighbors fix up or upgrade the fences or do those kinds of things. There, there's literally four different sizes on there. And they're all relatively good shape. I saw one that had a painting missing, but, you know, could easily be fixed. And my thinking is, is that, I, I just want to note it now so we can put it in position. And I, I don't know how you word that, but it's not their fence, is my point.
Yeah, it's not their fence, and so I guess our challenge would be to how to have them come up with some kind of, you know, somewhat formalized agreement to deal with it. So you could just make them put it in their own fence, that would solve one problem, but you're right, then...
It's kind of sensible.
Yeah, you know, fence facing fence, and so if... Yeah, I'll, I'll think about that as we, as we go through here.
Similar, similar to doing landscaping to keep it up over the course of the years. And maybe that's all it is.
Maybe just, Andy is just trying to be a good steward and help the neighbors with their fence.
Yeah.
And it becomes dilapidated.
Exactly, job only, or however you want to call it, but yeah. It just seems to me as though, we need to make sure though that it's not their fence, number one, and number two, it should be taken care of over the years. Thanks.
So with, with the parking lot, the, the parking lot requires one interior tree and interior parking lot landscaping for each 20 spaces. Islands need to be 90 square feet in area and horizontal distance of 9 feet and contain at least one tree. So they have 42 spaces, which would require three landscape islands or, you know, three, three, three trees on the interior of the parking area. So we write in here that while the islands are not shown within the interior of the parking lot landscaping, it's adjacent to those spaces and each curb along the perimeter. And in the past, we have, planning commission has allowed the applicants to, you know, have those perimeter trees count towards that requirement. Alternatively, you can certainly require that they install a landscape island on the property somewhere and plant a tree in it. Obviously, that will reduce their parking space count by, you know, at least one per island that you require, because the dimensions of the, of the landscape islands are about the same as the dimensions for a parking space. And so as, as you consider that, I guess keep in mind that you would be looking at potentially further reducing parking, obviously knowing that there's, you know, fair amount of public parking in that area as well.
I'm, I'm fine with having a front or having a parking lot as it's shown here without the islands in there. I, I see no, they've done everything they possibly can and still have adequate parking. That's my thought. I don't really have any... I'm, I'm fine with waiving that requirement in this case.
I agree.
For the site development requirements in the, in the mixed-use district, we have a, a few things here to talk about. There's just three items on this list. The first one is that there's the off-street parking located within the front yard of the lot. So again, in this case, this whole ordinance is written to pull every building close to the street and to continue that. And in preliminary conversations with Dollar General, I advise them that they need to try to do that, and they have. So in, in this case, they, they do have parking that would be, you know, near the street, so given the location of, of the building, basically everything to the, to the east of the building would be considered aside, a side yard, because the yard starts at where your, where your building starts. So I do think that they, they meet the standard and further they're kind of improving on what's there by continuing that building along the street. Item B is that buildings must have a primary entrance facing a public sidewalk. And so in, in, in this case, the applicant is proposing to locate the main entrance on the eastern building exterior, which faces the parking lot. It's also pretty much right at that southern corner, so right at that southeast corner of, of the building, where the, where the, the parking lot and the sidewalk kind of intersect, there's, that's where the door is. So it doesn't meet the parking lot or the public parking lot, but it's about as close as you can get. You could require that they, you know, put the entrance facing Main Street directly if you were so inclined. But I think what they have, have proposed certainly captures the spirit of what the ordinance is asking for, which is easily accessed by pedestrians and makes it convenient to walk into the store from the street, and that's what the ordinance is getting at. Then the last standard here is that the, a, a minimum of 50% of the street-facing principal building facade between 200 and 800 feet above grade must be prized out through windows. And so if you look at the building elevation, they just proposed to extend the, the windows on Main Street. So for the, for the extended portion of the, of the building, they would, that, that portion would be more than 60% glass, which meets that standard as well. Mr. Chairman, with the site plan review standards, do you want to do these all at once, like we did before, and always kind of walk through them at a time?
With the site development requirements, let's, is there any questions on those three? I, I, I'm fine with the door opening towards parking lot still. I, it makes sense to me, and I, I think it looks really good.
Yeah. It's, it's an entry they've always had, so...
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's do the site plan review standards, A through, what is it about?
Yes.
A through F.
So the first standard is that the uses will not, that uses proposed will not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare. It will take into account the property size of the property, et cetera. I think this, this needs that standard, the, you know, the building results in additional retail space. It's designed to accommodate pedestrian traffic. There is a, a reduced number of parking, they've added bicycle facilities, which are all good things that are encouraged by that mixed-use district and city. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongestible, defined particular pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and egress points throughout the site. So they're proposing to reconstruct the curb cuts on, on the property, and they would, I think, have better access on, on Main and Avery. Given the fact that the, you know, there's an expansion of the use and a modification of that curb cut on Main Street, they're going to have to get a permit from MDOT for that one. I don't know if it will, if it would require any, any, any changes, but they would have to comply with whatever MDOT asks for with their permit.
Prove on Avery Street.
Avery Street, that is up to the city, so there's, so that's something where the city DPW will look at the, at the alignment, make an issue of permit there. One comment that we did have here is, you know, we're kind of not sure about the loading and unloading area. So Dollar General at times, I mean, you see full 18-wheeler Dollar General trucks, and so I don't know if that's the kind of deliveries they would be getting here and then how they would access the site where they would unload and how that's going to happen. That is something that is not shown on the site plan, and I'm not sure if Dollar General's on the call, but that might be something that they can, they can address if they're on the, if they're on the phone.
Sue, is Dollar General on the phone?
Yes, we do. Somebody had a call from Dollar General, correct?
Yes. Jason with AI Engineering, working with the developer, who was the LLC.
Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Yeah, regarding the loading and unloading, so access will be off Main Street, it would pull in to the, I guess, the northeast corner of the expanded portion of the building, and then would maneuver back into the receiving loading dock and loading dock location. And then I believe they have worked with the developer for Dollar General, looking at exiting onto Avery with the delivery. So they look at deliveries about once a week for the larger, and obviously a little more frequently with the smaller freedom chip, chip, and I think so.
Tell us to me like you're like, you know, down the street, leave Joe, go through Avery.
Right to Jefferson.
Yeah. I think we would make the requirement though that they go to Jefferson to exit, go out Avery and then turn right and go, make it mandatory as a condition.
Is that what they currently do now?
Yes.
I've, I've seen it pulled back out on Main Street, I've seen it both ways.
Well, for downtown, for businesses here, they're supposed to, and we come down Avery all the way into the backs of all these buildings, right? So that is designated for the bigger trucks to come in and out of.
But it would be good if they got back on the Jefferson Street. It'd be a right-hand turn, and you wouldn't be plugging up the area down here, so I'd make that recommendation as a condition that they exit.
Turn around and let a truck ride in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So existing, so...
Exit Avery Street, turning right on Av, on Avery Street, and then turning right onto Jefferson, which brings them back out to Main Street.
And that, that would be the kind of the natural preferred path anyway, considering the, the angle of the receiving docks and kind of that access, so I think that would be kind of the natural preferred.
Always want to turn right.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Andy, are you okay with where the loading area is now?
As far as the rest of the site goes, they have a sidewalk, posed bike racks, so again, they're, they're accommodating pedestrian cyclists and drivers, so that is precisely what is desired by that mixed-use district. I have received the arrangement of public or private pedestrian connections to existing plants, streets, and areas shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system. We've talked about this a little already. Generally, I'm, I'm happy with, with the overall design. Don't need a permit from MDOT for the Main Street curb cut. The Avery Street curb cut will require city approval, and talked about the circulation for the larger trucks, I think. Obviously, it's a small, you know, it's just a van with, you know, Pepsi or something, that's much less concerned. Item D, removal or alteration of significant natural features shall be restricted to those areas reasonably necessary to develop the site. So the site is fully developed now. I think this is an overall improvement to the property, you know, basically we're cutting down on parking, increasing usable building area, and overall improving the, the circulation and everything else on the property. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all applicable permits, codes, and requirements shall be met, which is something that you would have as a condition of approval and everything. And item F deals with the master plan and zoning ordinance. And so specifically, I think, you know, both of these, the, the mixed-use district was, was written, you know, specifically to accommodate and frankly encourage development of this kind of form, where we have, you know, front, you know, front-facing buildings, windows, entrances near the street, you know, side or rear-loaded parking, easy pedestrian access, bicycle facilities, et cetera. The master plan is, is kind of the same thing, so it talks about the properties in the downtown future land use designation, so it wants a mix of residential office and, and commercial use as any Main Street style setting. And the, the mixed-use district was written specifically to implement the master plan, so a big reason why we did this is that was something that was highlighted by the planning commission years ago as, hey, this is a good opportunity for us to write some zoning standards to implement this kind of concept. That's what was done. There were a number of, you know, meetings and walking tours with neighbors and planning commissioners and everything to get that part of the city's zone the way that it is. And I think this is a, a, you know, reasonably good implementation of that.
I would agree. Thank you, Andy. For the site plan review standards, A through F, I would make the motion that we accept the site plan review standards, A through F, along with any of the, any conditions that we have added. Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
All right, and is there a discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Mr. Ken Waldner.
I should unmute it, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Cadula.
Yes.
Mr. Schrammen.
Yeah.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Floodplain overlay district standards. Andy?
Yep, so this property is within the 100-year floodplain. That isn't necessarily a huge problem, as that, you know, this existing building is also in the floodplain. Pretty much everything downtown is also in a 100-year floodplain. As far as the land goes, obviously the building's elevations can be increased to, so, so that they don't flood. So the use, the floodplain permits the same uses that would be permitted otherwise. It's just that there are some additional standards that need to be met, so... The, you know, a, the, the permit, a floodplain permit or a letter of no authority from Eagle would be required. And so basically what they have to do is either, you know, provide something that, that demonstrates that the building is, if it's, if the lowest habitable floor is, you know, not one foot above flood elevation, they'd have to provide documentation from an engineer demonstrating that it's stable. If it is one foot above, above base flood elevation, that's fine. And then they also, you know, we'd have to make sure that they're not displacing, you know, floodwater and then artificially raising the floodplain elsewhere. And elsewhere, in the past, that usually comes up when we're talking about compensating cuts, that's what that is intended to do. So there, you know, we have in here that the planning commission may require all of these things, basically as conditions of approval, so if there's a, you know, permit or a letter that should be required from Eagle that demonstrates compliance with these standards, that's kind of what we're looking for here. So from, from a land use perspective, I don't have concerns as, as those two, the floodplain, and as they're extending the location of the existing building, that, that doesn't concern me either, and I'm sure they've doubled this before, and either dislocation or as others. But we've suggested that all of these requirements be included as conditions of approval, because they were specifically, you know, submitted and dealt with as part of the original application.
How are you?
Then the commissioners, any questions? I would then make the motion that we accept the floodplain overlay district standards and with the conditions as, as cited here. Is there a second to that?
There is, I can.
And discussion? Sue, voice vote, please.
Mr. Ken Waldner.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Cadula.
Yes.
Mr. Schrammen.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes.
Andy, recommendations?
So we have recommended the planning commission approve the application. We have conditions, as we all do. So the first four conditions, well, the first three are the same conditions that we put on everything, as we've been discussing. Other fees, compliance requirements from the engineer, the library department, Department of Public Works, et cetera. Continue compliance with the other, all other applicable ordinance, closing requirements of the city. Item four, submit missing site plan elements as listed in our staff report unless these items are waived by the planning commission. And those missing items, let me go back to the memo here. Those missing items only include the location of existing structures, driveways, and parking areas within 100 feet of the subject property, location of existing and proposed unloading, actually they showed us the loading areas. So existing zoning and utility was only items they had not shown us on the site plan. So it's all existing, so if you want to excuse them from submitting those items, I think that would be fine. Number five, land intensity shall exceed one half-foot candle at all adjoining private property lines. There's, like I said, there's only that one spot where they're just narrowly above 0.5-foot candles according to the photometric plan, so I think that would be a fairly simple adjustment there. Six, receive approval from the DPW and MDOT for the curb reinstructions on Main Street and Avery. Seven, continual maintenance of landscaping, buffers, green belts, et cetera. Numbers eight, nine, ten, and 10 relate to the floodplain issue that I was talking about, so obtain all necessary permits or a letter of no authority from the ENR or Eagle, if that may be appropriate. Number nine, most recent flood elevation data received from FEMA shall take precedence over data from other sources, so if there's any discrepancy over what the 100-year floodplain by reaction is, we would defer to FEMA. And then number 10, research professional engineer architecture certified, the standards of Section 1404b2 are met, and flood proofing methods employed are adequate to withstand flood depth, pressure, velocity, and impact and uplift forces, and other factors associated with the basic flood identification of the structure. and other factors associated with the basic flood identification of the structure. And then the last two that you've been discussing that we're proposing to add on to here would be that the neighbors shall, or the applicants shall cooperate cooperatively with neighboring property owners to maintain adjacent fencing owned by the neighbors. And then number 12, loading trucks exiting the site shall exit via Avery Street, turning right onto Jefferson Street, and then following Jefferson Street south to Main Street.
Underly, fancy maintain, can we say a dollar to general expense?
Sure. We should specify that it will only be for that portion of the fence that is adjacent to dollars of that.
Right. And again, I don't think that that should be a yield breaker. Seems to me as though that's a right way to go.
Because you can put your own fence up and they're going to help.
Yeah, exactly. And most of the fences, like I said, are in pretty good shape. Let's say there's one thing missing on one of them. Could be later to come in.
And so those are the 12 conditions suggested. I guess if the 11 conditions now confirmed. Are you okay with the leading condition number four about the site plans, the 11?
Yes.
Okay, so we're down to 10 conditions. Oh, sorry, 11, thank you.
I would make the motion that we accept the site plan for the Delaware General at 413 East Main Street with the 11 conditions. Do I have a second? Like, second discussion? Sue, voice vote please.
Commissioner Ken Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Cadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Schrammen.
Yeah.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Delaware General, you have your site plan all set up with the following 11 conditions. And thank you. Nice job.
Thank you, Mr. Schrammen.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a public hearing, site plan review, special land use at 1279 West Main Street, Jimmy John's Restaurant Drive-Thru Facility. I will open the public hearing now. And Andy, will you leave it so up? First of all, do we have any representatives from Jimmy John's?
Yes, sir. This is Paul Anderson, Prozine and Associates, the engineer that prepared the site plan. We're joined also by Jared DeHorsne, who represents the franchisee for the restaurant. As well as John Clark of H&amp;H Management.
Paul, if we could, if we would have, in simple words, in three or four minutes, let us know in general use what you would like to do with the site.
The proposed development is just under an acre of an existing three-and-a-half acre vacant roofed land. It's definitely just, you know, by, it's just a grass boundary of existing commercial use. The ground will be, I'm sorry, 1,400 square feet. We're proposing a drive-through window as well, provided with stacking on site. Stormwater management will be collected, infiltrated on site as well. Access will be grant will be obtained from Fulton, who have shared access with East End, enjoying a piece of property. So be served by other water sewer, which will be connected through the door. There are no new additional curve cuts on Fulton or Church Street for this development. And that's about it.
Thank you. Andy, you want to lead us through the application?
Yep, so as the applicant stated, this is the property that would be the subject of the development. It's only used a little less than acres. I'm assuming this property is going to be split from the rest of the land on that site.
We have a representative, John Agle from H&amp;H. Can you address that issue?
My name is Paul, so if something repeated, that'd be great. Otherwise, you'd have to share the.
John, I'm going to have Andy repeat it then.
So we're just confirming that the, that this would be located on a separate parcel from the larger three and a, you know, three-acre piece? There'd be some kind of a land division or property split that you're proposing here?
Yeah, I mean, we were, we proposed a property split in the past. We had some other interest in order in church and up like, but right now, we're not thinking about a property split. But if we need a property split just for the Jimmy John's, certainly we do now.
Thank you, Jared.
So the site plan is complete. You don't have anything that we need to add or additional information that we need to request for the site plan. The dimensional standards are met by the proposed building. As the applicant stated, they're not proposing a curve cut onto M21. It would utilize the property directly to the west, which is owned by the state entity. As far as parking is concerned, ordinance requires one space for each 100 square feet of gross floor area for grabbing restaurants. So at 1,400 square feet, there's 14 spaces that are required. The applicant has proposed 20, two of which are barriers, barrier-free, so they are, they're okay with what they're, with what is proposed as far as the minimum requirement goes. And usually, again, this is, usually we don't have a situation where, you know, there's, you know, overabundance of parking. It's only by four spaces. And generally, we try to minimize the amount of, you know, impervious services that we have with the city. That's why we're fairly accommodating of the general expansion, even though they were cutting their parking supply down significantly because, you know, we get to see productive buildings in uses there. Parking spaces, the maneuvering aisles meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. One highlight I will make related to the stacking area, and I think we'll get into that in a little bit when we talk about these specific standards for, for drive-throughs. But the ordinance requires, I believe, 10 stacking spaces. And like with burger thing, they have enough of them, but some of them would kind of, you know, stick out into the main parking area if there were actually 10 vehicles there. So during a very high traffic volume, there's, you know, some potential for, for some conflicts there between people trying to pull into a parking space or back out, and there will be a line of cars sitting there. The extent to which that's going to occur or that it is of great concern to the planning commission is absolutely up to you. My primary concern is that they're not going to be, you know, sticking out into the street, and that would not be the case here. If there is any exterior lighting, that would need to be shown on the site plan. I didn't see where that was addressed. They have proposed a monument sign, which is something that we can deal with after site plan approval. So we have approved of course. Section 12.04 zoning ordinance has a bunch of specific site development requirements for C3. We've talked about these before. So A pertains to outdoor storage and not as proposed, B deals with landscaping. They have, the ordinance requires six streets and 18 shrubs and landscaping shown meets that standard. Because there are only 14 spaces shown in the parking lot, additional interior parking lot landscaping is not necessary to the 21 tree per 20 spaces. C pertains to entrance driveways and that they shall be located as far as practical from two intersecting streets and at 100 feet from intersection. There are no entrance driveways on Main Street here. So from an access management perspective, that's a good thing, not have those conflicts onto a main street like that. And then D, only one driveway for principal use or collective principal use per street shall be permitted. And again, there aren't any curve cuts onto Main Street here. So we don't have any concerns with the C3 district standard specifically.
Site plan review, commissioners, anything? Okay, Andy, you want to go on to the site plan review standards A through F, I believe it is?
Yep, so the first standard states that the uses proposed by adversity affect the public safety welfare. Site shall be designed to take into account topography, size of the property, uses on adjoining property, and so on and so forth. Property's flat, grass area, it seems to be highly developable land as far as I'm concerned and given its location. You know, if the planning commission wants to require a split there, you certainly can. You know, it may not be necessary, but that's something that, you know, for future development, it might eventually happen anyways. That's something that I will leave to you to handle. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongestion of all defined particular and pedestrian circulation shall be provided for ingress and egress point in within the site. So again, access here would be from the property that's directly to the west. And I think they have also shown that they would have the sidewalk connection to the front of the building, which planning commission has required for a number of previous uses on Main Street. Trying to make it my report back here, stand by. Last one spot.
Hold on. Site plan reviews standard C.
No, no, actually. Okay, item C, the arrangement of private or public particular pedestrian infections to exist in your plans, these areas shall be planted by a safe and efficient circulation system for traffic within the city. Again, you know, there aren't going to be any changes there. So subject to any comments from any other city departments, that standard would be satisfied as well. Item E, I'm sorry, item D, removal of natural features shall be limited to those areas which are necessary to develop the site according to the requirements of this ordinance. Aren't many natural features on the site as this has opened, you know, grass field basically. Obviously, with everything else, maintenance of landscaping would be included as a condition of approval. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of other applicable ordinances, codes, requirements of the city shall be met. That would also be addressed as a condition of approval. Item F addresses the master plan and zoning ordinance. As far as the master plan is concerned, this property is also within a mixed-use, future end use designation, although it's different from the, from the previous one that we were talking about as far as general concern. It does not kind of play downtown style development and its location. So, you know, generally speaking, this is a fairly typical conventional commercial use. There is sidewalk act and pedestrian act on the property. They gave that sidewalk connection to the front of the building. Given that it's a fairly small footprint with a drive-through, I would expect that most if not overwhelming majority of traffic to the site would be, you know, drive-through traffic, I would anticipate here. But there certainly is provision for pedestrian connection.
I would thank you.
Mr. Jared, excuse me?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate to speak in this time, but I would like to make one note regarding the property split. If I may.
Yes.
Prior to consideration. If it leaves the commission, rather than make the site plan approval contingent on getting parcel split, we would prefer just to leave some flexibility for John that, that the site plan, you know, if it does get approved, is intended not a parcel split, but if it isn't split, that the additional offering would be required along the property line of the existing parcel.
Say that last little bit again.
Yeah, if, if the parcel isn't split, then John would be required to provide the required landscaping buffer along residential properties that are on property line.
So what he's referring to is that when you have a, a commercial parcel split, but say a residential parcel, that you need to have, you know, fencing and screen and something like that between those two. In this case, because, one, this is a landscaping standard, so the planning commission has some discretion. Everybody's asking that, you know, if absent a parcel split, then the planning commission could require that they put that screening in so that the property, the residential properties at the doors would have that between them and the restaurant. Does that make sense?
What's the incentive to have them split?
Well, I think for, for future development, I mean, if somebody were to come in and want to build something next door, you can't have multiple principal uses on the same property anyways. So to me, it seems like it would be a pretty clean thing to do, just to just split off the Jimmy John's by its own property. It's got the size, it's got the frontage. Resultant property would have frontage on Main Street and Church Street. So there are multiple splits there available. If that was, if that was desired, then I think that's, if the site is going to get developed to more another commercial use to the east of Jimmy John's eventually anyways, I mean, to you, it makes sense to just do it now, right? Because you can't, you would give it, if they came in or if somebody else came in, if you wanted to build something right next door, we'd say, okay, cool, split the property because it can't have a Jimmy John's and something else being both principal uses, both on the same property. We wouldn't like that anyway. So my thinking was it would be a simple thing to do it now, but.
It would, overall, it's just, I think, would prefer to have some flexibility as far as the boundary lines of that property. You know, if another user were coming out of the corner and those adjustments made as far as the parcel split. I don't want to totally derail the conversation, but I just would appreciate consideration of allowing him not to do that split at this time.
Who would be in charge of maintaining that whole square of Avery, Jimmy John's or?
The property owner, so, yeah, it's existing.
H&amp;H.
Owner, sure, yeah, H&amp;H.
H&amp;H Management, where they take their major of the property, they would own the Jimmy John's land as well. They're going to be sit for Jimmy John's.
So, I mean, right now, I mean, that's fine. I don't know. I mean, to me, I don't perceive the division as a particularly large obstacle. A lot of it can be adjusted at necessary. They're proposing to have a, it's relatively limited. It's only going to be, you know, a few feet deep, but there's a stormwater depression here that would have to be included on the Jimmy John's property. Is that where it's also created to accommodate stormwater from other properties?